Okay, good evening. At 6:00 PM, May 25th, 2022, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. So if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda item tonight? If so, you can check in with Mary Ann, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. One, two, three, nobody's saying anything. All right, we're gonna move on. All right, I will ask for a public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. Okay. Bill Blaisdell and Ron Bonvey are absent tonight. So sitting on the first hearing will be our three regular board members, as well as, let's see, George and Bob. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing, please?
174 Captain's Row. Owners John S. Kelly and Carol D. Kelly request a variance under 174-33 setbacks from wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of an in-ground pool on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 30, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicants, John and Carol Kelly, the owners of property located at 174 Captain's Row. Also with me tonight is Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands Engineering, who can certainly answer any questions regarding the site resource areas. We have applied for variance relief from section 174-33, which is the 50-foot setback from wetlands. The applicants tonight are looking for relief for a modest-sized in-ground pool that will be to the rear of the property. This project has already been approved by the Conservation Commission. Again, it's a modest pool, and conservation has required a substantial amount of mitigation, approximately 1,500 square feet. So the pool and associated work will certainly be an improvement to the property. Where the pool is proposed is lawn area currently, and there is also hardscape that is going, that is already existing closer to the Mashpee River than where the pool is going as well. The home itself and all associated structures, basically this whole project, the existing structures are all within the 50 feet already. It's a unique lot in the fact that the shape is narrower by the road than it is by the Mashpee River, and also we have top graphical issues considering all the various wetland resource areas. So we have coastal bank, we have coastal beach, we have the river. So I think that there is sufficient evidence for the board to approve a variance in this particular case. I would also suggest that there would be no derogation from the intent of the bylaw, one, because conservation's approved the project, and two, there's already substantial encroachment into the 50-foot buffer already, and as I say, we're just proposing a modest-sized pool. The pool itself, I believe, is pretty much sited where, it's in lawn area, but it's technically coastal bank, so the variance would be for zero feet.
So wouldn't you be getting a variance?
For 50 feet, I guess would be. How you want to say it.
So you're looking for a variance of 50 feet?
Correct. Basically, it's in the, it sits on what is, what's considered the coastal bank, so which is a resource area.
A 50-foot setback from wetlands?
Correct. As I said, it's all lawn area. You'll see that, if you can see the line for coastal bank, it kind of intersects where the, where the pool is located.
Okay, so the dark dotted line or these dark straight lines?
No, that's, this one's, again, there.
It's a-
I don't know if that dark line is coming off the pole, it looks like, now it's supposed to be a drywall.
Drywall, a pool drain.
Yeah, yes.
Drywall with a pole for the cover drain?
Yeah, there's a, more of a light dash line that intersects the coastal bank.
That's, that's, that's last one.
So the whole-
Right along the side of the house, right along the-
Right. Yeah. So as I say, the whole, the whole existing structure is within that 50 foot for the, for the most part, and again, there's other hardscape that exists already that's closer, you know, is already within, you know-
Conservation's already approved.
And conservation's already approved it.
Doesn't need any other setbacks.
No.
What's the lot coverage?
It's fine. It went from 14.6 to-
16.2.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions.
Yeah, I, I set it at zero, thinking, well, it doesn't, you know, there's no distance between, but-
Do I have any questions?
No.
Anybody?
Yep.
This is very easy.
I like these ones.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? All right, why don't we read in the, Sharon?
Okay. Water Health has no comment. Conservation, 174 Captain's Row, conservation has approved this project with the condition that all mitigation plantings must be installed and inspected by the conservation agent prior to the, to a building permit sign-on.
Anything else before we make motion? Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 174 Captain's Row, owner John S. Kelly, Carol D. Kelly, request a guarantee under section 174-33, setbacks for wetlands, zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an in-ground pool on property located in the R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 30, Mashpee, Mass. The board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of variance under the Mass General Law 4870, ten. Site plan cleared for John S. and Carol D. Kelly, 174 Captain's Row, sheet number 1 of 1, date dated 24/20/22, drawn by M.D., checked by M.C., prepared by technology engineers, drawn title, proposed pool in patio, floor 12/22, move pool slide along depth to 15.50 feet, side setback, 39/22, add extra drain pipe, an extra catch basin. The board issues a setback for the wetlands in a amount of 50 feet. Conditioned as all town department comments right into the record. Conditioned that the changes to the plans will apply to the applicant, for the applicant to return to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, Jim seconds. So let's do a roll call vote. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Very good. All right.
Let's talk about his candidacy, because he, setback on, yeah, okay.
Step up.
It is, baby.
Yeah. That got me too.
Good, I feel better about that.
Right, have a good night.
Take care, Chris.
Good seeing you.
Okay. I didn't know.
Good, the other names aren't on there.
Yeah, I just crossed them out, so we put a line through the names. See what I mean?
I'm looking up my field.
Yeah. Twenty feet. Okay. All right. On the next hearing, we're gonna have Charlie and Brad sit on this one. Sharon, would you read the next new hearing, please?
Zero Country Club Lane. Owners Kenneth E. Marsters, Prime Homes, request a special permit under 174-51 B/C of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a 55-square-foot sign at the front entrance of the subdivision with lettering on both sides of the fence that reads, "Country Club Estates," on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 59, parcel 39, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi, my name is Ken Marsters. I'm the owner of Prime Homes. Our property, let me just try to give you an idea where it's located. If you've ever driven down Old Barnstable Road, and you all have, and you know the very dangerous turn that's there, there's a subdivision, that's our subdivision, a subdivision that would never be approved today, for obvious reasons. The site distance is terrible on the left, the site distance is terrible on the right. But it's a 1976 permit, so it was grandfathered in, so it allows us to put the road in there. It's a very dangerous road area. Every afternoon, the cops sit out there, they shouldn't, because it's a road now, but they sit out there trying to deter traffic, and there's been multiple accidents over there. People come down, and they hit that area at high speeds, and they don't see there's a turn, even at the very last minute, there's a turn, but I also find out the people that drive down that road turn down there fast anyways. It's, it's very dangerous. But we wanted to make it a very nice area, so we opened it up. It's a big mouth, it's a big area of the mouth of development. It's by far the largest in the town, bare none. It's 190 feet from one end, 190 feet to the other end. So it's a double lane going in, and then there's two lanes going out. We have been working with the town to try to put in a third turn lane to help create it, to make it a little bit safer. I'm going on safety here, it has, it has something to do with the signs, okay? So it would make it safer, so there'd be a third turn in like they have at Southport. We have already met with Rodney Collins, Wayne Taylor, DPW Catherine, Chief Carlin, the retired chief of the fire department, and also the town planner. So it's a big do. They want us to see if we will fix it, and of course, we're willing to do that, but it's gonna require some work on our part, some work on the town part, and we're sort of working on that together right now, and I'm ready, willing, and able to do that. It's a 68-lot subdivision. We already have 14 homes sold, so it's, I'm not here because I want my sign to sell me homes. I have no problem selling homes. And, you know, it's not gonna last forever, but, you know, we build a nice product, the entryway is beautiful. We went in front of design review, and we, you know, we got their approval. I tried to tell them, we tried to do it tastefully. I think, oh, you have some type of a drawing, so you can, you can reference it a little bit. And I think people have probably already drove by, driven by and seen it and said, "Where's the sign?" Because there should be a sign there. But we did a nice stone wall, we did flowers, we did trees, we did rocks, upgraded the front entryway to the golf course. And keep in mind, for traffic reasons, that is also the exit out of the golf course now. I'm saying that because it's gonna be a little bit trafficky with the golf course and the people that are living in there. And, you know, Old Barnstable, back when, you know, I used to sit up there, was an old, old road and didn't get much traffic, but back in the late 90s, early 2000s, we did a study, and, like, we were always doing studies commissioned by the selectmen when I was in the board, to see how could we change and fix the rotary? Well, guess what? That's never gonna happen, okay? But we tried back then. And one of the ways we did it back then was we came up with all of these signs that go to the major roads into the rotary, we put the signs that directed them away from the rotary. Now, one of those signs is, if you're coming down Great Neck, I get my Souths and Norths mixed up all the time, south, and you take a right onto Lovell's Road, you'll see a big sign that says, "To Route 151, To Born, To Falmouth." We're trying to direct all that traffic off the rotary down into, past my curvy, little windy little road, which means we have a lot of traffic down there. The trucks down there during the day are incredible, the amount of traffic. So it's not a, it's not a, it's a busy road. It's a busy road, and it's intended to be a busy road, but it's a very, very dangerous curve. So like I said, the mouth is big, we were required to put a double, we have basically four lanes there, and we have a nice little island in the middle. And we built about a 14-foot island that was our design, and we thought, what would look nice, what would go to scale? So we came up with a sign that was 55 feet long, and I, we've talked, talked to John before, because he was on the design review. And it's basically the same size as New Seabury sign, only because it just turned out to be that way. And I know that the, you know, and that's why I'm here, I'm here for variance. I know it's a bigger sign than what the bylaw allows, and the bylaw allows a 20-foot sign. That rule was written in 1972, hasn't been changed since then. There are signs out there that are smaller than 20-foot sque, subdivisions, there are signs that are more than 20 square feet. There are signs that should have a one entry in, one sign, but they have two entries in. So it's over the course of time, it's been, it's sort of been a bylaw that, you know, we paid attention to it, but it's been broken a few times. And, and nothing that's not very tastefully done, in my opinion. So we wanted to make it to scale, and we wanted it that big for a couple of reasons, but for the reasons, for the safety reasons. People, if they come down the road, if you see that sign, you'll know there's something there. You might just pull back a little bit, and you definitely will during the day, you'll pull back, you'll see the sign. It's not a big sign, it will be small from the back, but you'll, you'll see a sign. And at night, if we have that thing lit up, and at night, it's very dangerous. And at night, if we can light that one back, and that's why it's double-sided, because we gotta come in this way, we come in that way, you'll be able to see it, and it will be lit up like a spaceship, so at least at night, it will be a little safer, too. And that's an area now where we're gonna be getting more cars, because now, just, this is the, quite not the first year that the golf course is coming out of there, and like I said, we have some homeowners in the neighborhood right now. So our goal was to build an entryway that would make a little bit of a statement, would be aesthetically pleasing, and be very, very beautiful, and a high-quality sign, high-quality maintenance, high-quality flowers, the whole bit. So it is, another thing, too, is we want to try to slow down that speed if we can, so people will slow down a little bit, and, you know, we want it well-lit, and we think that with the scale of the sign, with the, with the hardscaping of the sign, that it's the proper size. And, you know, I would just say to, I know what, when we were doing design review, we got caught up in this New Seabury thing, New Seabury, New Seabury. And as a matter of fact, I changed my logo, because my logo looked like theirs, so they called me up the next day and said, "Change your logo." I said, "Oops, sorry, I'll change the logo," you know, and I got a better logo, so that's okay. Rob Mills called me, my good friend, the attorney, and said, "You know, you don't want to fight with New Seabury." I said, "No, I don't have his deep pockets as Carl Icahn, I'll pass on that, okay?" But, you know, just to put it to scale, I have some pictures here, and it shows it. And like, you know, I own property in New Seabury myself, so I'm there all, all the time, I have a place over in the cottage, and I go in and out of there, in and out of there, right? And that's a 55-foot sign. And the mouth of New Seabury is 90 feet. My mouth is, no, wait a minute, so we get this, yes, 90 feet. Mine's 180 feet. So what I'm saying is this area is much larger, much more open than, than New Seabury, and when you drive through New Seabury, I don't think you say, "Ooh, that sign's out of whack, it's too big for this area." It fits in nicely. So, you know, I think my sign would fit in there nicely, too, and I think that area calls for a larger sign. And the last thing I want to do is put a big sign up there that's gonna look ugly. Big signs don't make me money. Big signs don't make, I'm not a, doesn't make ego. I just want the area to look very, very nice and very, very professional, and so that's my spiel.
I think another good point is that sign being larger, if a sign was small, because that is a dangerous curve, if you're looking for that, and it's a small sign, sometimes it slows down, you get a little bit, I think it's traffic.
Yeah.
Throwing down to read the sign.
You know how many people come and say they can't find my neighborhood, because they're looking for country club sign? I have a sign up there that says Country Club Lane, but don't try to see where it is, because you'll probably hit something on the way while you do that, because it's so damn small. Because it's on the corner of 180, 90-foot mouth, which is about 90 feet away from the entry of the road. So that makes sense.
The opening is huge, I just pulled out of, playing the Wednesday League there.
Yeah.
I just pulled out of there coming here. It is, you did a really nice job, and we have all the different lanes, because you have one lane going this way, one lane going this way, coming in.
Yeah, and it's, the curvature is so bad, and I'm trying to get the town, but, you know, trying to get the town to do something, right? I'm trying to get the deep W, just to, just to, and I might even do it on the golf course property, because they're not doing it, just take some tree limbs down, help me out a little bit. Because it's okay now, but when, when it comes with the trees, it's not okay now, it's, it's not bad, but it's terrible when the trees come, because you can't see anything. But that's why we're working with the town.
There's trucks, there's trailers and dump trucks coming down there constantly around that corner, and they're all jake breaking around the corner.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, when you're coming from the corner from 151, and so the entryway would be on your left, I just stood there one day, and everybody that was taking that right, their left-hand tire was on the other side of the road, because it's so tight, that turn.
There's trucks coming both ways, I can't imagine how tight it is for them.
It's, it's, you know, here's a true story. Here's a true story. The other day, we went down there, we saw a kid in the woods, "What the hell's he doing?" His motorcycle was in the woods. He got run off the woods.
He rode off the road.
He got run off the road, yeah, but he was okay.
That's good.
You know?
Came through there on my way here tonight, and car coming towards me at both left-hand wheels across the double yellow.
They do that all the time. And here's, here's something, too, I just noticed the other day, I'm coming down 151, and I want to take a left into my subdivision, so I put my left turn signal on, you can't, because you immediately turn right. So your left turn signal clicks off, so if you want to take a left turn into my subdivision, which is the scariest one, you have to hold down your blinker.
Because you're going right to take a left.
Yes, it's, it's, it is terrible. It is absolutely, you know, you pull out of there, and you gotta, you gotta fear for your life sometimes, and like I said, it's a crummy spot, but we are working with the town to see if the, because we have to take some of their town land, too, and work with the DPW to build another road, so we're hoping to widen that road down the future.
So when you come down from 151, you'd be able to turn left before you make the corner?
Exactly, exactly, absolutely, that's what we're working with. Yeah, yeah, and everybody that was on the town with me, we had the who's who of the town that day, I had a lot of salary in that room one day, let me tell you. They all agreed with us, and something needed to be done.
Sharon, I think we have a comment from Evan.
Yes.
Can you read that?
Okay, it is dated today. Except where permitting or propose as part of the development for which a special permit has been issued by or is required from the planning board, any new sign exceeding 20 square feet in any awning sign shall require a special permit from the Board of Appeals according to Article 6. This subdivision was originally pursuant of the Board of Appeals' special permit from 1973. The subdivision was again reviewed and approved by the planning board in 2002, but is not subject to any new special permit by the planning board. As such, I believe it is appropriate in this case to have the Board of Appeals act as special permitting granting authority for the proposed sign. This is a tough intersection. In fact, there is a redesigned concept of this intersection that will be required in the final lot release. Given the tight turn on Old Barnstable, it is important that this sign be visible enough to communicate to motorists that there are cars entering and exiting this subdivision. I have no issue with the proposed sign. These islands are quite large, and the sign should be comparable in scale. I recommend approval, assuming there are no line of sight issues creating, created for cars exiting the subdivision. Evan Lehrer, Town Planner.
And there will not be any sign, the, the sign is much further set in versus coming out, so that's the last thing we want to do, is just, you know, disrupt the site issues.
If you're gonna take a left or a right, you're not looking at the sign.
You're gonna, the sign's gonna be way behind you. Yeah, yeah.
Anybody have any comments?
I just, I just have a question. In terms of what we're doing tonight, the size, I have no problem with, I agree with everything you say.
Thank you.
Are we committing you to the design that we see tonight? And is the lighting for that sign included in what you need?
I don't think the design of the sign is, I think just the size of the sign is the only-
Just the size of the sign.
No problem.
But, you know, but if you drive by, you'll see where my, you'll see where my lights go, those, those gray poles that are sticking out of the ground, they're gonna be light, they're gonna be lit up, so that you'll see them.
That's my question.
Yeah.
Well, we are, we are signing off of the sign.
This is a special permit because it exceeds the, the 20 square feet.
And that's the size.
This board, as opposed to the planning board, because of the reasons that were down, which is-
So we, we're in the right place.
But if we approved the size of the sign, he wants to change his logo, I don't think that's anything to do with us.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
No, 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 I just had a, I just, it was funny, I had a problem with my first logo, so, I mean, that's, you know, I changed it. It's much, it's much prettier, it's much better, it's awesome.
I'm good.
I think it's a real attractive sign.
Yeah, you know what we're also doing, just to, just further one thing, I'm putting, if you drive down my street, Country Club Lane, you'll see poles, I'm putting streetlights down there, too, so the whole neighborhood will be built up, even beyond the signs.
Yeah, to me, otherwise it'd be a pretty dark road to drive down.
Scary, scary.
I was driving by the, the sign that you have up there.
That will be coming down.
Yeah, it's very small, but it was parallel to the road.
Yeah, that wasn't very bright of me, was it? I didn't want to move it, yeah.
Yeah, I realized that that's going to be changed. Is the new one also going to be parallel?
No.
Okay, because, no, I couldn't see it from here.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I took my eye off, and I almost ended up in the country-
Yeah, I'd probably be yelling you out the next day if you did that. Yeah, that wasn't a very smart move on my part.
Sharon, would you read the comments, please?
Neither, it's not in wetlands jurisdiction, and Water Health has no comment.
There you go. Okay, any final questions? Anybody in the audience?
Yeah, one thing.
Would it be-
This one is gonna be, this is perpendicular.
Along with what you proposed, would it be beneficial, like New Seabury has, they give you 500 feet heads-up prior to approaching your, your property? Would that help, too, also?
You know what? That would be, that would be for the town to decide, because it's our property, right? But you know something, here's something, when you're coming from 151 to my property, there's a dangerous curve sign there. Nobody sees it. Because when you're driving, you're, you're looking to the there, and there's a big yellow sign. Here again, don't look at it, you probably hit something, but yeah, I, I might, I'm gonna put some, I'm gonna put something on some trees out there, maybe, if I get permission, some reflectors, you know, or something. Not on a tree, we'll put it on a tree, because then I'll be, I'll go to jail. I'll, I'll put it on a pole or something, I don't want to touch a tree.
There's that awful telephone pole, too.
Yeah.
That terrible telephone pole.
That, that terrible pole is right there, right as you pull out of our subdivision. Somebody's gonna hit that someday.
But there's, there's one a little bit further up, that's right on the edge of the pavement.
Yeah, right as you come out, it's like, that far.
Yeah.
Yeah. So don't anybody come down my neighborhood, it's very dangerous.
That's not a good sales pitch.
Can you believe people are buying homes there?
It's not a good sales pitch at all.
Thanks.
I feel like I should make that part of my bike ride.
Oh, it's a beautiful bike ride, it's, people love to walk there.
Thank you for putting that in, because I now, instead of just trying to hairpin around and fly up that hill, I now just-
You can go to the right a little bit and have some freeway, yeah.
I can breathe a little bit.
Yeah, it's funny, you wouldn't believe how many people drive down there, and they just stop, and they park there, and they get, and they get on their phones, like, "You can't park right there anymore," you know? But the cops park there all the time.
All right, anything else before we make a motion? Brian, if you would?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to approve Zero Country Club Lane. Owner Kenneth E. Marsters, Prime Homes, requests a special permit under section 174-51 B and C of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 55-square-foot sign at the front entrance of the subdivision with lettering on both sides of the fence that reads, "Country Club Estates." On property located in R5 zoning district, map 59, parcel 39, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Law 48, Section 9. Front entrance plan date 12/29/20, provided by Prime Homes and Realty, sheet P2, Country Club Estates, front entrance design, Mashpee, Mass. Note, plan not to scale, and conditioned on all town department comments right into the record.
Second? Okay, Jim seconds, so we'll do a roll call vote. Brad, how do you vote?[1740.42] Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much. It's been 27 years since I've been to a zoning meeting.
Should come more often.
I was on the zoning board 27 years ago, before half you guys weren't even born. Thank you.
Okay. Have a good night.
I don't know about that one. I think it's the other way around.
Okay. All right. Other business. Sharon, would you read other business?
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the meeting minutes of May 11, 2022.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to pause for a second, we do have to sign off on that special permit. Before we go any further, let's take care of this business.
You did a nice job with that road in, and the way they did the entrance, everything. You did a nice job. That is not a good sales pitch. Take your life in your own hands entering your neighborhood.
Because if two cars meet on that curve, one of them's over the double.
Well, the trucks cut through there all the time, it's where you.
Check, approve.
And it's a terrible road.
Because all the dump trucks cut through that way, because they don't want to, all day long, you have them.
Use all the.
Are you saying we're going to danger?
You're right. This is Charlie.
Where he's at the traffic lights on Great Neck Road North.
It's a beautiful road.
Take a right.
Beautiful. It's doing great. Great home, it's a beautiful home. Reasonably priced, you know, for all to be speak.
A little bit further.
Oh, he had a home number of the time.
All right, setting at your time?
Is it set at lights?
Nice job.